Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, June 12th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Council President Vanderbahn.
Present.
President Proton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Banks.
Present.
Councilmember Brightwell.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Present.
Councilmember Frazier.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag here. Do we have a call?
Thank you. Will everyone please rise?
Detail. Attention. Harry Collins. Forward march. Left turn. Present arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Detail. Order arms. Break face. Forward march.
You can be seated. This is always exciting when we get to swear in new firefighters as well as promote from within. And as our fire chief steps up to the podium, I'd just like to say that our meeting right before this, we just approved our budget for the next year. We had just over $23 million going to the fire department. And we are excited. We keep providing the newest technology, all the gear they need. In a couple of weeks, hopefully, we'll have a ribbon cutting for the new training tower that you could see behind headquarters. So there's a lot of exciting things going on in the fire department. And our fire chief definitely is making sure that we are a first-rate fire department. We are the busiest in Oakland County. And we train and we expect the best and we get the best from our fire department. So, thank you very much. And with that, Chief?
Was it, did you say 23 million? Oh, come on. So, good evening, President, Council, Mayor, other elected officials, visitors, friends, families of the city of Southfield. I stand before you tonight. I have eight representatives, eight, I have eight new candidates to be sworn in today. Two lieutenants, three firefighter paramedics, and three firefighter basic EMTs. I just want to take a little minute and talk about the process of the promotions and the new firefighters. So, to become a lieutenant in our department is a very rigorous ordeal. I mean, you're competing against other firefighters with a written test. I mean, it's written, the information, the amount of information that they have to study. We're talking about over 1,500 pages of information that they have to study, as well as we go out and we find command officers from departments across the state to sit on the oral board to evaluate them on their processes. So with the combination of a written and oral scores, there, you know, there's a list established. I would say this is probably the most competitive and hardest position to achieve in our department. You can score 90% on this test and not be chosen, not actually become a lieutenant. That's just the level of commitment that your firefighters are achieving to this next level as lieutenant. You know, it's based on that 65% of the test scores is on the testing, the written application, and 35% on the oral interview. So it's a lot that goes into this for the firefighters that actually test for this position. As far as for our new firefighters that come in, I mean, they go through a six-step process to become a firefighter for the city. They go through a written examination. They go through an oral interview. There's a second interview. There's an extensive background that we put them through. They have a psychological evaluation as well as a medical evaluation. Like I said, they have to pass all of those parts just to be able to get through our door. And a select few of them have already completed their paramedic training, which is 13 months of classroom, you know, classroom testing there. And then they have another 600 to 800 hours of field time of clinical hours that they have to go through, as well as then they have to pass a national registry test that covers airway, cardiac, trauma, pediatrics, and EMS operations. And they have to pass all those parts at one sitting. You can't pass four sections and then come back and pass the other one. It has to be done all at the same time. So there's quite a bit of training that has happened with these individuals. So, the new firefighters, you know, they had a year of probation. They've been, I won't say probed and prodded, but they've been evaluated by their peers, by the officers and the command staff of the department. They've learned firefighter and rescue tactics. They have a lot of EMS skills. They've learned how to drive fire trucks, how to pump with trucks. I mean, they've had quite an extensive training regiment over the last year. And I'm here to say that they've not only met, but exceeded our expectations with that. So, I would like to start by first calling up Lieutenant Vanderbahn. Badge number 270. He's been with the department 19 years. Next, I'm going to call up Lieutenant Paramedic Herschel DeCosta. Badge number 284. He's been on the department for 18 years. Next is firefighter paramedic Jake Van Els. Badge number 332. And we were able to get him. He was a firefighter EMT and a WASSO. So next, we have firefighter paramedic Terry Fisher. Badge number 352. She comes through us from private EMS. We hired her and she actually went to the fire academy. So next, we have firefighter Brett Mills. Badge number 355. Still you from Farmington Hills? I mean Farmington, not Farmington Hills. The Hills. Next, we have firefighter paramedic Jordan Smith. Badge number 356. Firefighter Smith came from private EMS. So, if you've noticed, we were able to find them from other places. So next, we have firefighter Sebastian Blue. Badge number 357. Was a firefighter EMT in Utica and McComb Township. And last, but not least, firefighter Alex Hadlin. Badge number 358. He was also a firefighter EMT in Flushing and Davison and Novi.
All right, now we'll have our city clerks swear them in.
Just a couple quick questions, Mr. President, if I may. I just want to thank again the citizens of this great city, council, the city administrator, for always backing the fire department for not only just saying, "Well, put in your money where your mouth is." We don't take that lightly and we're here to serve, elevate, and educate this community. So I want to thank you again. Also want to point out human resources. I know I have Jessica Karen in the back. Raise your hand, Jessica. Jessica really helps vet the men and women that are chosen to be a part of the fire department. I want to thank her and Dr. Calhoun. I think I see her also in the back. I want to really thank them. The police department for doing our backgrounds. They've done a marvelous job on our backgrounds and I'd like to thank them, as well as Marcy, our administrative assistant of the fire department that helps us out every day. So, to the lieutenants. You know, your job is to supervise the firefighters, be responsible in proper care and maintenance of the quarters and keep everyone safe, you know. It's time to step up and lead. I want you to be accountable, accountable to yourself, accountable for the men and women that we've installed and put in. Trust me, you're to make sure that they're safe. I've known both of you almost 20 years. I know you're going to do a great job. I couldn't be prouder of you. So to our new firefighters, you know, time goes quick in a career. It goes really quick. You know, this is a time where you start embracing, find out where you're going to be and where you want to go in this career. The sky's the limit. You're the only one that can stop you from your career of where you want to go. We promise to give you the tools that you need to get there. But, you know, we're hoping to take every advantage the department has to do with that. You know my motto is serve. Serve yourself, serve the community. Educate, educate yourself, educate ones around you, and elevate. You should elevate everybody else's game as much as you elevate your game. And my expectations, as I said, I told each of you in the day you came in, first, I think you cannot make me a liar. You're exactly what I thought you would in your entire life. But you should be everyone like my mother, father, sister, brother, or one of my kids. That's it. We're one big happy family here and that's the expectation. You don't have to ask, do the right thing. Just do the right thing, all right? So, ladies having chest pain, want you to mail a water bill? Mail a water bill. If a kid gets hit by a bike? Fix the kid's bike, right? Do the right thing. Don't pass a stranded vehicle that has somebody in need. You know, stop. That's the Southfield way. That's our way. You know, remember, don't forget who you serve. You know, you serve the citizens, the visitors, business partners of this great city. Don't lose sight of why you got into this business. This is a calling and that's the job. You know, and I really appreciate each and every one wanting in what you do. My tones are on my bed at night. I hear the tones. You've gone on a lot of calls. Like I said, we're the busiest in Oakland County. We have been for years. We're going to probably top about 16,000 calls this year. So I appreciate everything you're doing day in and day out. And to the families, I want to thank you for raising individuals that want to serve, you know. But this is the time now they're going to really need your support as they move forward in their careers. They're going to need a lot more support. If they're not right at home, it's kind of hard to be right here. So, you know, they're part of our family now. I give you my word that we're going to protect them and do all we can to make sure they're safe. As I always say, I'm hoping to return back to you, hopefully, the same way that you shared them with us. So, I'm really proud of you and so honored and thankful that from each one of these individuals. Remember, no one below your badge number should fail, right? You've got to own that. Someone below your badge number fails, that's on you. All right?
Councilman Brightwell?
Well, Chief, I just want to thank you for having such a good department. But I want to thank the citizens of the city of Southfield allowing us to support your department the way it should be supported. And we haven't spared a dollar, we have not spared a dollar in supporting your equipment. And we recently went through a compensation and we upped the ante with respect to salaries. And I just want the citizens to know that we are 100% supportive of the public sector, section of the city of Southfield. And as an individual that interface with the public from a political standpoint, sometimes we get some unvarnished comments. And we know specifically, Southfield, people who moved to Southfield because of public safety and the response time and the quality of our fire and police department. So I just want the citizens to know that we are conscious of what they want and we have spared no dollar in equipping your department. And since we started doing this, I've always taken note of individuals who come to our department from another department. Obviously, there's a reason for that. And those reasons are personal, but we try to make sure that we tap every known reason for an individual to come to the city of Southfield, to our fire department.
Thank you.
Are you still looking for more firefighters?
Yes, we're still, our application process is still open. Yes.
All right. And then the other question I have is strictly curiosity. There's two, we have two lieutenants being sworn, or they were sworn in this evening, but they both have different jacket types. One with stripes, one without.
They're coming. I mean, when you, you know, the, we still have a, we still have a supply chain issue. So we're waiting on some new uniforms.
Got it. Okay. All right, Council, any other questions or comments? Right, well, congratulations and thank you for coming to Southfield and being here.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you're up next. That's a hard act to follow.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
As you know, it's required by state law that the Local Officers Compensation Commission meets every other year. And it's that time again. So, tonight, I have two reappointments to the Local Officers Compensation Commission. And I have an appointment. We'll now have a full contingent of seven members. So I'd like to ask Rosemary Allen to come up. This is a woman that needs no introduction. Rosemary does many, many things in the community, as you all know. And she said she'd like to do this too. So, I never say no to Rosemary. So I'm bringing her appointment to you tonight. I also have the reappointment of Donald Jones and Alan Watson. I don't believe either one of them are here this evening. And then, we had an appointment earlier this year of Andrea Gruber, but she was filling the last few months of Steve Huntington's term. So she needs to be reappointed to a full three-year term. And then also, Gana Goodwin-Dye was, had a partial term. So I'm recommending her reappointment to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. So, I'd like to present these five people to you for reappointments and one appointment.
Council?
Saying no questions, Mr. Chair. I'd like to recommend approval of the reappointment to the Local Officers Compensation Commission of Mr. Donald Jones and Mr. Alan Watson. Also, the reappointment to the Planning Commission of Ms. Andrea Gruber. The reappointment to the Planning Commission of Gana Goodwin-Dye. And the appointment to the Local Officers Compensation Commission of Ms. Rosemary Allen.
Support? It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, for the reappointment to the Local Officers Compensation Commission of Donald Jones and Alan Watson. The reappointment to the Planning Commission of Andrea Gruber and Gana Goodwin-Dye. And the appointment to the Local Officers Compensation Commission of Rosemary Allen. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Council. Now, I usually screw this part up, so I won't tonight. I'd like to call on the city clerk to do the swearing-in of Ms. Allen.
I'm better yet.
Mr. Mayor? I guess we'll skip around.
You know, all of that for a couple of meetings every other year, right? We love you, Rosemary. So we're under presentations, correct, Chairman?
Yes.
So I'm flanked by two lovely ladies here this evening that are among the chorus of people who are helping us with our week-long celebration of Juneteenth. In Southfield, we go big on Juneteenth. It's not a day, actually, it's almost 10 days this year because of the way the holiday falls and all of the things that we wanted to cram into it. So once again, council, I'm before you for a joint resolution. Mayor and council for the celebration of Juneteenth week, which is the 14th to the 21st. It actually started this evening with our Juneteenth flag raising. So whereas, Juneteenth is a holiday marking the, marking the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, when the Union Army, when Union Army General Gordon Granger landed at the Texas port of Galveston in 1865 as the Civil War drew to a close, one of his first actions was to read General Order Number Three, which stated that all slaves are free and former masters and slaves are, have absolute equality of personnel and property rights. Whereas, Juneteenth is the oldest-known celebration commemorating the end of slavery in America. This tradition of celebration has remained strong well into the 21st century to recognize the triumph of the human spirit over the cruelty of slavery and the honor and honor of the strength and endurance and faith of African-Americans in, and their ancestors. And whereas, this year marks the second federal, Juneteenth federal holiday. Whereas, it is imperative that the citizens across the state together, join together to acknowledge a time in our history that carried on, carried on the nation's ideals of equality and democracy and celebrate the joys of liberty and justice for every American. And whereas, Southfield will once again observe Juneteenth with a week-long celebration focusing on history, arts, entertainment, recreation, and conversation. And once again, I'm going to very quickly list the things that we're doing, starting with tonight, the flag raising and this resolution. Then on June 14th, the Centropolis Young Entrepreneurs Pitch Event, which is like Shark Tank, will be taking place on the campus of Lawrence Tech University from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. On June 14th, Dr. Cordilla Noble will give a book talk at South Public Library from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. And it's a study of leadership development and self-efficacy of career and career readiness among African-American, Black women. And June 15th, the Juneteenth Senior Luncheon will be in Room 115 of Parks and Recreation. There is a $20 charge for this from noon to 1:30 and for residents. And June 15th, Born Free and Equal, Michigan's Colored Regiment, the story of the Civil War's first Michigan colored regiment, number 102. And discuss, it's a discussion by Maurice I'mhoff in the South Public Library from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. On June 16th, we'll have a Juneteenth art exhibit at the Umoja Fine Arts Gallery down in the Crossroads Building at Northland Drive from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. On June 17th, we have the Mayor's Walk, and I hope you'll all turn out for that. We start at the front of City Hall. It's about a two-mile walk. And we end up at the Governor's Church next door for the Underground Railroad marker. June 17th is also an extravaganza. It's our Juneteenth Jubilee, led by the Parks and Rec Department. We're taking, will be taking place all afternoon and evening, including spoken word, hosted by Joel Fluent Green, impulse dancers, Levy Middle School Marching Band, the Step Show, music by DJ DZD, yard games, and outdoor concert by Wee Bone at 7:00 p.m. Also included will be food trucks and the Black Bender Marketplace from 4:00 to 9:00. And then on June 19th, we have the Juneteenth Brunch and Scholarship Program at Debo's Restaurant on Northwestern Highway, sponsored by the Pearls of Wisdom Foundation. And with me is Xena Kyles from the foundation. And that will commence at 11:00 a.m. to 1:30. Advanced tickets are required through the Chamber of Commerce. That's a $40 donation. And then the library kicks in to conclude the week on June 21st with Jazz and Blues at the library. And Yolanda Haynes is with me, who is the chair of the Friends of Library, which is responsible for the Jazz and Blues series. So with that, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council, city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby proclaim June 14th to 21st, 2023, as Juneteenth week in the city of Southfield and encourage all citizens to participate in Juneteenth Freedom Week and celebrate African-American history and culture while continuing to promote diversity, equality, and a strong sense of community in our city.
Councilman Cruz?
Just a question on the, on the resolution that I didn't think to ask. So does, so is June week, Juneteenth week, this resolution just this year, good for this year? Or is it gonna always be on the 14th?
Well, every year, we have a different lineup. So I, we proclaim Juneteenth week with a different date. Depends on what day of the week Juneteenth falls. So thus, we are, I'm bringing this back before you. I'm sure I'll be here next year with my partners and others once again. But this gives us an opportunity to also publicize all of the things that the city is planning for Juneteenth week. The resolution is a little different every year.
Okay. I was just wondering, wanted to change that and say every second week would be Juneteenth or every third week. Because I figured if we're gonna do seven days or more, we'll cover a weekend. Because I know you're gonna want a weekend day, I'm sure. But I think it's not a big deal. I mean, I just was asking for clarity.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the resolution as presented with a copy made and forwarded to our representatives in state at the Lansing.
It has been moved by Councilman Frazier, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the presentation of a joint resolution for Juneteenth week with copies being sent to our representatives in Lansing. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And I heard from Congresswoman Talib's office today. She plans to join us on Saturday. So not only will do a state, we'll do a federal. How's that? Okay. Ms. Kyles, I'm going to present this to you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
And we truly appreciate the participation of the various departments and the AKAs and the Pearls of Wisdom, the library, the Friends, and everybody else, because this is a endeavor that we have many partners in. And we're glad that people step forward to help us plan these events and attend. And everyone is welcome. Except for the two meals, everything is free.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we will now go to our communications portion. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules and procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impotent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. First person we have is Yolanda Haynes.
Well, you sort of covered what I wanted to talk about. As president of the Friends, we are excited to collaborate with the city and all of the other organizations. I just want to make a personal appeal to the public and to family and friends. We don't take, I don't personally take Juneteenth lightly. This is a very important day in the African-American community, and we would like to see the support of others for this cause. Having come from the South and been not a part of anything that those people, ancestors suffered, I think it's important that we remember where we come from. And also remember in that fight and in that struggle that there were diverse races, religions, that helped to support the cause, to create the America that we have today. And I consider it an honor to be able to stand before you, to be able to speak, because those people did not have the freedoms that we have today. And we should not take that lightly in our celebration, because we can celebrate where they could not even after that day of recognition. So we're asking that you come out, support all the organizations, support the city, tell your family and friends, so the kids, the grandkids, the nieces and nephews can all know from all cultures what happened, what happened in this country, and now what has been corrected. And we are moving forward to freedom for all as we have it today. Thank you for supporting the Friends, and thank you for supporting our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Greg Keeler.
Hi, Greg Keeler. I would like to agree with Mr. Councilman Brightwell when he suggested that the minutes should be more detailed as opposed to just a yay or a nay. So when people are reading them, they can get a gist of what you are talking about or what's going on. Because we don't have the advantage of seeing all the stuff that y'all see on your computers and everything else. So when y'all vote for stuff, we didn't even know what it is. What exactly is it that you voted on? What did you say yes to? You know, and then when y'all tell people what, you know, we can go back to the minutes and everything else. I look at years past, and you can get a feel for exactly what was being said, what was going on, what the people at the microphone were speaking about. And right now, all we got is just a yay or a nay. I handed Ms. Banks a paper from a meeting from Coastal. And that one, you really can't get a feel of the meeting or anything else. You just got some general information that's really not put together really all that well. But it's just information there. And so it needs to be information put there. So if we go back and read your meeting minutes, we know exactly what was going on, what you voted for. And if we have something that we want to say about or speak about or say something to you, that we know exactly what we're talking about. Or at least have seen, at least have some type of an idea as to why you voted the way you voted.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. That's all we have for communications this evening. Next, we'll move on to the minutes. And we have a revised set of minutes from May 10th.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to move approval of the changed regular minutes or corrected regular minutes of May 10th, 2023.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the revised regular meeting minutes of May 10th, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we have several items on our consent agenda. Does any council member need anything or want anything pulled for further discussion? All right, so we have consent agenda item A, an appointment of representative and alternate to the Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority, or SACWA. B, janitorial supplies and cleaning chemicals. C, window washing bids. D, National Garage Sale Weekend. E, Plum Hollow fireworks permit. F, receipt of proposals for the 2023 roadway joint and crack sealing program. Item G, authorization to award a proposal to OHM Advisors for the professional design and engineering services for the south side of Nine Mile Shared Use Pathway from Prescott West to Lasser and then on the north side of Nine Mile to Plum Hollow Street. Item H, receipt of bids for emergency generators for pump stations. And item I, authorization to extend the water and sewer infrastructure relining and maintenance services.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve consent agenda items A through I as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve consent agenda items A through I. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to ordinance. We have one ordinance to enact.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1770, a rezoning request for an overlay development district, development agreement of Design House Architecture.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to enact ordinance number 1770, a rezoning request for an overlay development district, development agreement of Design House Architecture. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have agenda items for discussion and our action. And the first item is presentation and discussion regarding the proposed addition of adult-use recreational marijuana sales to Dreams Cannabis. Our deputy planners here fill in it.
Thank you, council. This is the Dreams Cannabis. They're for you for just discussion related to a special land use and site plan approval to add the adult-use marijuana, recreational marijuana sales to their existing medical marijuana provisioning segment. This was approved by you for the medical marijuana in April of 2020. It's the B3 district, corner of Telegraph and 12. It's the B3 district, corner of Telegraph and 12 Mile. Some aerial photos here that just show the site as it's developed per the plan that was approved in 2020. Some elevated, you know, photos of the actual building renovated. This is as it is now. Zoning in the area, you've got B3 on the corner, sponsored by RRS, which is Regional Shopping Center, future land use, commercial office use. This is just the exclusion zone for the marijuana uses, 500-foot radius. The middle one is for residences, schools, religious institutions, childcare centers, and parks. The 1500-foot radius is for pawn shops and alternative financial services. Just putting that on there so we know what the exclusions are. The, this is the site plan, this was as it was approved in 2020, and it was implemented as you see it in the site photos. Elevations as renovated. Floor plan, we've got the showroom and handling areas. Basement floor plan. And then there are some interior photos, and I believe the petitioner is here, if you have any questions for them. If they want to come up from Dreams Cannabis.
My name is Nadia Latfi. The address of Dreams is 28930 Telegraph Road. For the record, Nadia Latfi is my last name.
Did you want to add anything?
Um, I was just going to say, we're, we've been open since June of 2022 as a medical marijuana provisioning center. When we first got our site plan in special use, medical marijuana was 50% of the market. On the last report in May, medical marijuana makes up 2.87% of overall marijuana sales in Michigan, which makes our business unsustainable top rate. We stayed open despite losing a lot of money as to keep our employees employed and to not have a vacant business on the busy corner of 12 and Telegraph. We are going to keep our medical as we do have loyal customers that have a med card and enjoy shopping with us currently. We have had no incidences of crime. We run a very professional, secure business with well-trained and educated staff. We have a contracted security guard on staff as well for the safety of our customers and employees. And the industry has changed so greatly, and many of our neighboring communities have already opted in to have an adult-use retailer. So our residents of Southville get turned away every day to go shop in Berkeley, Royal Oak, Ferndale, and Detroit. And we would love to be able to welcome our residents and keep the money and the business in Southville. We're happy to answer any questions as education is our passion. We understand marijuana has a stigma, and there is understandable fears and concerns around it. I can assure you that being able to help our customers learn about the product and only selling state-licensed and tested product is much safer than the illegal market. And I'll close with marijuana use will not be stopped, and people will find ways to acquire it. We just want to make sure we can provide a safe facility with safe-approved products for sale.
Thank you. Councilman Fraser?
We responded now?
Yeah.
Okay. I just would like to say that I would be in favor of this. I think we've already talked a good deal about it already. When we first got into the sale of marijuana, or adult-use cannabis, I'm sorry, and we said, well, we would go with the medical to see if there was going to be any type of negative activity or whatnot in the two places that are coming in today. And as was stated, it doesn't seem to have been any. And I also would add that I think it's only fair for those who've already invested in the buildings that they plan to sell and that have already fixed them up and invested money, should be able to move forward before we start to add anymore. I think we have a total of three that we can have right now. Am I correct, or just the two?
I think.
I know we only have two.
I think it said we opted in for up to five, but there is only two sites.
Three and up to five, right? Is that right, Dawn? I think I remember that, too.
Good evening. I believe in 2020, we approved three, and then we had Dreams Kana that is operating. Loom was operating temporarily as the medical marijuana facility, and then there was one that never really got going. So only three had been approved for the medical, and Loom and Dream Kana are the only two that had started operations.
Okay. And then just the last thing I would say in closing is that, you know, for some that may be still cautious about this and saying, well, they don't want, that our residents are saying they don't want us to be a drug city or marijuana city or whatnot, please understand, people can just go right across the street and get it, and they come right back to Southfield. So it's not like we're keeping it out of the city. And the fact that it is, these places are much safer, and that, you know, the content is of better quality, and it could potentially decrease street drugs that are being sold because there's some of that in Southfield, too, that people are selling out of their houses and things like that. And now people may feel more comfortable going to places like this. So I would say my vote would be in favor of it when we do vote.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments, Council? All right, so this, Councilman Banks?
Thank you. Within the inside of your store, will you have, like, the left side is the medical marijuana and the right side is recreational, or how are people going to know the difference between...
Yeah, we're, yes, we're going to have, we're going to start out with the left side is going to be medical, and then the right side looking at the picture will be the adult use. And we'll have two separate check-in counters at reception, so the employees will know which customers are adult use and which customers are medical, because the products are tagged differently, they have to be sold differently, the tax level's different, so we have to keep it all separate in the store as well.
Thank you for the education.
Councilman Fraser?
Yeah, I'm not against this at all, but one of the things I think we need to be careful of is creep, and that is, you start out with medical marijuana, now it's adult marijuana or... And I would hate to see it keep coming back, oh, now we want to add this, now we want to add that, now we want to add this. Pretty soon, Southfield gets a reputation of being just what we're, Councilman Cruz talked about. We don't want to be the Marijuana City of Michigan, or... So I don't have any problem with this one, but I think we need to be careful and make sure that we don't slip into something that we're going to be sorry for a few years down the road.
Councilman Brightwell?
I've had the opportunity to, to visit this facility, not as a user, but as a council person, just to get familiar with the operation. And what I learned was they are obviously very knowledgeable of the law, very knowledgeable of what, in essence, what the requirements are, and very knowledgeable of the downside of this business. And the interior of it, and this is just from not being an expert on this particular industry, but from my visit standpoint, this is a very high-end shop. It has a lot of high-end fixtures, and not to say that this is, I have the facilities to, to visit these places, but at one point in my life, I used to travel, and I was able to go on Rodale Drive, and I was reminded, this shop reminded me of some of the shops I recall seeing on Rodale Drive. It was so nicely done, and it was, so from that particular standpoint, it just gave me a good feeling that they would continue to held the operation very, very professionally, and it would not be a, just a do-drop-in, you know, kind of place. So I'm, I'm supportive of this, but I'm supportive of it primarily because of the proprietors and what I saw from my educational visit in the past. Thank you.
Council, any other questions? All right, and this will come back at our June 26 meeting for...
Public hearing.
Public hearing and approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item B is a presentation and discussion regarding a proposed addition of adult-use recreational marijuana sales for Loom Cannabis.
Well, this would be sort of the, similar to the last one, Loom Cannabis, this is a special land use and site plan approval for discussion. Vote will be on the 26th for a public hearing. It's on Loser, between Coral Gables and Northwestern, near Northwestern Highway, B3, same zoning. This was previously approved for the medical marijuana in July of 2020, so a couple months after Dreams. It's an aerial photo of the site there in the corner. Here's some elevations as the building is now renovated. You can see the zoning there, it's B3 on the corner, and then it's got some regional center RC around it, and then some additional business zoning. Master, future master plan caused community facilities and other institutional. Once again, we have the radius, the 500-foot is the inner circle, that's the exclusion on residential schools, religious institutions, childcare, and parks, and the larger circle is a 1500 square foot for pawn shops and alternative financial services. Just a color site plan, giving an idea of how everything's laid out on the site, the parking and the landscaping. Elevations of the building as currently built. This is the floor plan of the building, and then some photos of the interior. And once again, I believe we have the, is the applicant here to... The petitioner's here to answer any additional questions you may have.
If you can just give your name and business address for the record.
Sure. I'm Michael Daldell, and our address is 2670 Lasher Road.
I'm Michael Beldon.
Anything you want to add?
Yeah, so I'm the vice president of Loom. Michael's going to be the store manager for the store. Share a few comments, if you don't mind. I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to speak today. I've spoken to the group a few times now. I'm excited to be able to speak to you on behalf of our company. We were really excited when we opened the doors last year. We made a significant investment to remodel and improve our location, as you've seen. Unfortunately, there was no way, as the team from Dreams commented, that we could imagine what would happen with the medical marijuana market. And the store was losing thousands of dollars each month that we were open. So we made the decision to close the store last year, and although the store was closed, we did maintain the store inside and out. The store looks as good today as it did when it closed, as well as when it opened. And we're excited to continue to work with the city to allow the store to reopen. We've begun to hire and look for staff to staff the store, but what we're looking for next is just the next step on some type of timing, so we can become a part of the community, hire staff, and ensure them that they'll have the careers that they like. Loom is the largest cannabis company in the state. We've got 33 stores in both the Lower Peninsula as well as the Upper Peninsula, and we want to do a first-class job for the city of Southville as we've done everywhere else. We've never had a complaint, we've never had any type of police activity, and we don't have any CRA violations with 33 locations, and we expect that to continue in Southfield. So we'd just like a little bit more information in regards to when we may open, and we'd also love to answer any questions that you all may have about our business or the cannabis business in general.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions or comments for the petitioner? Okay. This will also be back on our agenda in two weeks on June 26 for public hearing and approval or voting. Anything else you want to add?
Just a question, so the 26 will be an actual vote?
Correct. We'll have a, we'll have a public hearing and then an official vote by the council to approve or deny.
Okay. And because we, what we have done is gotten our fire and safety inspection, we've got all of our inspections and state approvals, so we're just waiting for the city to let us know what the next steps might be.
Correct, and we just said the reason for the 26 is we want time for council to ask any questions, plus proper notice for a public hearing to the general public.
Okay. Well, you should have all our information. Happy to leave cards if you have anyone to ask questions. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have item C, water billing payment processing. I think this is going to be a joint discussion with Public Works and our city treasurer.
Tonight, you're going to have the rare combination of the duo of Ryan and Loonstein on this issue. As you remember, last November, we came to you as Public Works to ask for a contract with another contractor for the payment of water bills. That contractor was not able to do the water bills, and so we came back to you in February and said, we want to go back to Paymentis, the firm that had been doing our bills since 2014. At that time, we noticed that their contract had actually passed beyond the deadline, AKA expired, but they were keeping us at their regular billing. When we approached them, they looked at our account and said, wait a minute, this contract isn't for the services we're currently giving you. It was originally for services for pay-by-phone, and now we've expanded to pay online. So we began negotiations with Paymentis in the clerk's office, Public Works, and Legal Department, and Paymentis offered us a contract that I don't think any of us would have accepted. Our wonderful treasurer here negotiated with the Legal Department for reduction in fees, and most of these fees are, went up because, number one, it went from a simple contract of pay-by-phone to online, and to the advent of now these bonus cards where you get miles and cash back, that increased the cost for Paymentis to process our payments. That's why we're coming back to you now and asking for a two-year extension to the contract. The contract will now end on July 1, 2025. The payments will evaluate non-qualified fees, acknowledge implementation or review to customer information file to handle processing, and modify Schedule A to reflect the correction of non-qualified transaction fees. In addition, this contract reflects the explosion in the use of online to pay water bills. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our wonderful treasurer. He can fill you in with more information.
Okay, thank you very much. So the big issue is the amount of volume that we're currently doing. Originally, we were estimating, you know, a certain amount of volume, but we're actually seeing it mushroom dramatically in terms of, and it's actually a very good benefit for the city in terms of being efficient, being, allowing our customers, our residents to be able to, be able to pay from the convenience of their own homes. They don't have to come in, they don't have to worry about getting payments lost in the mail, which unfortunately, we've had issues in the past with the postal service. So, but just to give you an idea of the amount of volume that we've seen, so with Paymentis, it was in 2019, there were 8,368 transactions that we did for about $1.5 million. That went up to, because of COVID, it went to 12,000 in 2020, and $2.4 million. Just to get, jump forward, 2022, it actually went up now to 41,000 transactions that are actually being, taking place in 2022 for a volume of $11.8 million. So that, we actually build in the cost, we absorb the fee for merchant processing for the customers, so we don't charge a convenience fee that other municipalities do, and instead we get a much more favorable rate with, because we take advantage of, it's called an emerging market rate, and we actually are getting one of the best rates in the country right now, we were able to negotiate for our customers. And so this way, we keep the And so this way, we keep the cost down. We keep it very compatible. I mean, we, we keep our residents happy by not having to pay that fee. And in the end, it's a win-win situation for everyone. And so the volumes are flowing very nicely, and we hope to keep it up and maintain a relationship. So we're asking right now just for the budget adjustment to the hundred fifty thousand dollars that will absorb into the, into the water billing model.
Counsel, any questions? Counsel and Hoag?
Just one quick question. So it says here that the non-qualified fees are only waived through October two thousand and twenty-two. And that they're evaluating those fees right now?
So I'll explain what happened. Originally, we were using the Eden billing method. That was our billing system that we used from Eden from Tyler Technology. And when we switched over to BSNA, that's when we switched over as well to Paymentis for the online payments. What happened was that originally, we had a restriction, no corporate cards. When we switched over to the BSNA system, it opened up the availability potentially for people with corporate cards to pay. Those are considered non-qualified, as well as also, non-qualified would also be like the reward cards, like frequent flyer mile cards, the cash back cards, the high cash back cards. So the volume of, of, of business that was coming through on those cards were much higher than initially anticipated. Up until that point, we had a flat fee of a dollar forty per transaction, for every credit card transaction. Afterwards, they said, oh, that, that's, we're, we're losing a ton of money at Paymentis, they said to us. And so we need to recoup, and that's where we negotiated back and forth. And so we were able to keep it that they didn't go backwards and try to recoup prior to October of two thousand and twenty-two. And then after that, we were able to get a favorable rate that, that we were able to, and they give us a five percent allowance for, for those cards that they build in as, at the dollar forty price.
So, I'm sorry, let me just get a clarifying question. So for the non-qualified fees, do we know that fee right now? I thought they're.
So what it is, is that we're, we're trying to, we're getting an allowance of five percent. What we're trying to do is actually now eliminate the, the corporate cards again that we, we had that restriction on previously. And we, we had to work with BSNA, with Paymentis, and our IT department to be able to adjust the billing methods and to be able to change that. The corporate customers are able to pay with electronic check or with, you know, or they, they could send in a check in the mail, or they can ACH their payment. They, they could send in through their bank account. But otherwise, we, we're trying to eliminate credit cards for, because those are going to be the more expensive transactions. And that's, that will keep our expenses lower. And so we're, we're anticipating, we'll get it back down below that five percent, hopefully. And things will stable out and, and be favorable.
And we ensure that this increased amount to a hundred and fifty thousand will take us through the end of the contract?
It'll take us through the end of this fiscal year. The goal is that we're, and then we have adjusted our budgets right now for the new fiscal year as well, so that we'll be able to be, be adjusted to this new billing model. And, and we're also working on trimming the expenses of the corporate cards and, and, and keep those, keep those costs lower for the city.
Counsel on Banks?
Thank you. This company only represents the water department. They don't do the taxes also.
They don't do taxes. Taxes are done through Invoice Cloud.
I'm sorry, through who?
Invoice Cloud is the name of the company that does the merchant processing for. BSNA had two companies that they were, they had exclusive arrangement with, for merchant services. It was Invoice Cloud and Point and Pay. We actually were able to break that model because, and, and get favorable, Invoice Cloud and, and, and Point and Pay were not able to be compatible even with, with the pricing that we're getting with Paymentis. We're getting a much better pricing with Paymentis than they would have, than they would have been able to offer. So for us, it's also important because this is something that we absorb, that cost for, for the city expense. And for Invoice Cloud, we're actually, we negotiated with them to, for taxes. And that is actually paid directly by the residents, by the taxpayer. They pay a convenience fee because that's a larger dollar amount. Typically, a water bill is going to be a hundred to three hundred dollars, thereabouts, on average. A tax bill is going to be thousands of dollars. And so the cost, if we would have had to absorb a tax bill merchant processing, that would have been very expensive. And they don't have the favorable emerging market rates that they have available for utility billing. So the Invoice Cloud, we have the best, in the state of Michigan right now, we have the most favorable pricing for our residents at the two point six right now, is, everyone else typically is about two point seven five to three percent at least for their fee that they would charge to those residents. So we try to, we worked hard on negotiating that as well.
So we pass that cost on to our residents on their tax bills. On the water bill, the water system absorbs that, and we, we package that as part of our pricing.
Okay, so if I understand this correctly, I thought if I paid my tax bill online, I was charged three percent additional.
Two point six, two point six.
Two point six. So if I do my water bill online, it will be zero?
Zero, correct.
Okay.
And we want to encourage people to pay by electronic fund transfer or primarily an ACH. That's the most, the cheapest way for the city. But we, we cannot pass increases, tax bill increases on to the taxpayer. Law doesn't permit it. The water system, we built our system, like any other merchant, to absorb those fees.
And how did this company, again, discover this air? We've been dealing with them for how long? And they just all of a sudden said, oops, I'm losing money and?
What happened was that because of the switch over to BSNA, it didn't have that, in Eden, it had the restrictor on corporate cards. We didn't accept corporate cards, and so there wasn't that type of volume that we ended up having with the BSNA system. That, when we switched over to BSNA, that's when they, they realized, oh, wait a second, your, your volume has gone skyrocketing.
Thank you.
Councilman Fraser?
Councilman Banks asked a question that I was going to ask.
Any other questions, counsel? When can residents expect to get an email notification that their water bill is ready? I know that's a question I always get. You know, we get the bill in the mail. I log into the system. I can download a bill. I can pay it online. I can do all that stuff online. But I just can't get that notification or that bill emailed to me like I can with other, other bills.
We will try to work, as we're making these adjustments, there's an update that's actually going into, to the system on June twentieth. When that update happens, we'll try to work also with Paymentis in terms of sending out notifications, because they're, they're a major company. They're processing payments for DTE and Consumers Energy, I believe, as well, and other, you know, larger, much larger entities in the city of Southfield. And so I'm hoping that they do have some type of a method. invoice cloud, for example, when you pay your taxes online, they will send you a notification every, every tax season that there's an outstanding tax bill waiting for you, and would you like to pay that? And they'll send you a couple of reminders over time. We'll work with Paymentis to try to work on the water billing reminders.
We, we, we don't want Paymentis sending. They're, they're going to charge us a fee. And so I put your question to Nagum. She says right now that if you're registered for an ACH, you will get a notice that you have a bill. And we'll clarify that and bring the water department in. But you posed that question to me last week. Friday, I had that conversation. If I'm recalling it correctly, we can do that now if you, if you're on an automatic payment. So if you're registered, you'll get your bill notice, and we'll automatically debit your checking account. We have that capability today. That's the preferred mechanism. We'd like people to go. Paymentis is going to charge us dollar forty if it's the old way, or if you're using a bank card, they're going to charge us this fee.
So if you're, if a resident is already signed up or a business owner already signed up to, for an automatic payment through ACH, they'll get the notification, but you can't sign, you can't necessarily sign up to have it automatically charged with a card.
In addition, I've asked my IT director to work with finance to make sure that we are using all of the bells and whistles with BSNA. Other communities are doing what you and I discussed. And this is, you know, we've put this system in starting a, a year ago, and we're still learning new pieces of it. You know, the fact that Paymentis, that BSNA restricted, or that Eden restricted corporate cards, I don't think that, it wasn't even on our radar screen, to be candid.
Just, just to understand also, we have controls in tax. We use BSNA for tax, and then we also now use it for utility billing. The controls that we have in tax are different than the controls that we have. We could turn off the ability to pay with a credit card for certain accounts for tax, but we don't have that ability in the utility billing section of it. It's something that we've discussed with, with BSNA. We're trying to work on those enhancements. But that's, that's where this extra update filed that we're doing on June twentieth, that will finally allow that restrictor in there.
Okay. Counsel on Banks?
So where's, where's the checks and balances when it comes to if the people pay online or a credit card with this company? Do they send a list to the water department, and then an individual has to compare it? How, how is that working?
There's a daily upload that Nagum and, and the water, the water department billing people, they receive a file on a daily basis, which goes into the BSNA system. And they're able to see exactly all the transactions that happened in the previous day. And, and then we also get a summary at the end of the month as well that, that's reconciled as well.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we accept the negotiated agreement between Paymentis Corporation and our city attorney on May first, two thousand and twenty-three, and that we authorize the payment of four invoices dated two thousand and twenty-three of January through April, two thousand and twenty-three totaling just over sixty-four thousand to Paymentis Corporation, and that we authorize the increase of annual payment from fifty thousand dollars to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the negotiated agreement between Paymentis Corporation and the city of Southfield and authorize the four invoices between January and April of twenty-three and the increase of the annual payment. Any further questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I want to thank our city attorney, Dawn King, for all her efforts. She was very diligent in, in protecting the city's interests and getting the best deal for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have item D, receipt of bids for the two thousand and twenty-three local concrete road rehabilitation project.
Good evening, your honorable, honorable body. So Southfield has received three bids for our local concrete road rehabilitation project from contractors pre-qualified through the city's RFQ process. We, the proposed project includes concrete roads that will have select concrete slab repairs in the Sharon Meadows subdivision and the Wild Hearn subdivisions, both those subdivisions in section ten of the city. The total cost of the project, including twenty-five percent for engineering, testing, and contingencies, is one million six hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. Funds are provided by the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, local street funds. So looking for counsel to authorize the expenditure and adopt the attached resolution, which awards the two thousand and twenty-three local concrete road rehabilitation project to Great Lakes Contracting Solutions. Oh, I should mention, the construction is scheduled to start approximately mid-July and then be completed by the fall of this year in November, and this will improve two point one miles of local roads in Southfield.
Counsel, any questions?
What did you say the total was?
The total expenditure is just over one point six million.
Why are we approving one point three?
So one point three is the contract award. So that's just the construction cost as bid. And then we add twenty-five percent, which is fifteen percent for engineering and testing, and then ten percent contingencies in case there are overages to that contract amount.
And where does the other twenty-five percent come from?
It all comes from our local street funds.
Why don't we write the contract for not to exceed?
Because I'd end up back here before you, because there are always some type of changes that come up during construction. And the construction engineering can be a little dependent upon how, how efficient the contractor is in getting the work done. Contractors that are moving slowly take more effort on the engineering and contract administration side. So those are not fixed amounts for our construction engineering. And then with the construction payments, just sometimes things come up, or we've come out onto the site and found maybe some additional slabs that have deteriorated since we did our surveys last fall. So small things like that can increase project costs.
Okay, so my question was, why don't we say not to exceed? And you said that you, because you'd be back here talking to us again. But if you included the twenty-five percent in this contract amount, plus the twenty-five percent, if they do what you said, or they find something, you're going to be back talking to us anyhow.
You're right. I'm sorry, misunderstood your question. Yeah, that's, this is just the typical language that we have used. So anytime we enter a purchase order into the system, this counsel item is attached so that purchasing department knows that we are authorized for the expenditures. So we can say it in the item in the future if you prefer, but that's all you're authorizing here. So that's all that we are allowed to spend.
Okay. It just, just isn't. We think we're spending a million and three. If they spend a million and three plus twenty-five percent, that comes out of the budget, but we don't know the twenty-five percent, how much the twenty, of the twenty-five percent comes out of the budget. So I don't know. Am I looking at it wrong? I, you know?
Well, I, I think it might be safe to, coming out of local streets, a, account is the one, the one million six fifty-six. You're not going to exceed that figure. You know, you've got the, the low bid contract of one point three, then the twenty-five percent contingency for engineering inspection, test, and, and other contingencies. We moved to this, and, and good, goodness, going back, because we were constantly coming up short. And I think you got to go back to about two thousand and thirteen, fourteen to figure out why, why, why and when we changed this language, because we were constantly coming up short. We weren't, at, at one point, we weren't budgeting for our engineering on these. But if, if you want to have a not to exceed, your not to exceed is one six fif- fifty-six. And it's the award to the contract, to the road builder, then our engineering testing and other contingencies.
So it is broken down in the resolution language, what the low bid amount is, then plus that twenty-five percent. So that twenty-five percent on some jobs may be close to fully expended on other jobs. We, you know, are probably closer to just fifteen percent over, because there may not be many changes to that construction contract.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
This is going to be the same question for all. This is gonna be the same question for all three projects. Or actually, are we gonna have open houses, informational meetings for all the residents affected?
Yes.
Okay, so the project's gonna start mid-July. When are the, when are they gonna be notified? Because that's...
Um, it probably, you know, once we give the council award, or the notification of award to the contractor, things start moving quickly to get the contract executed. So we do wanna make sure that, you know, we've got the contract documents being routed for the appropriate signatures, and at that time, we'll schedule with the, the residents for a public meeting. Just let them know what they can expect on the projects, particularly the third contract that we're awarding, because there's a lot of underground work with water main replacement. These concrete and asphalt rehab projects, they're a little bit quicker through the neighborhood, because you don't have any of that underground work going on. So we're really just impacting people for several weeks at a time on each block, as opposed to months when we're dealing with underground.
So that was gonna be my next question, is why is there no underground work in these, in this neighborhood?
These are neighborhoods that don't have high priority water main needs, so we're just trying to get into some of these neighborhoods and where we know that we have a lot of poor road conditions, and spend the road dollars to improve the, the condition of those roads. The projects that have water main and road needs, those projects move a little more slowly through our system because of the big expenditures on the water and roadside, and just the impact to the residents. There's only so much we can get done in a season there.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Wrightwell?
Lee, with respect to, to, to budgeting, and I think you produced a report a few years back, and I'm not sure whether it's a recurring report every year, that indicate to us to the contingency funds that were not used, and the money came back to the city. Is that an ongoing report that you produce, or is it upon request?
We typically refresh it upon request. So we've got pretty detailed spreadsheets, and that is something that, you know, we can freshen up for our projects that are completed and see where we ended up. If council would like to see that, it gives you a better sense, on the construction side in particular, of where, where we ended up compared to what that original low bid was.
Sure, well, but I would like to see some of that, and it's very good information. But I'm trying to, I'm trying to determine whether that, it would be project per project, or should we wait to the end of the construction season to get a report that says the amount of contingency that was not used, and/or whatever else was in the, in the contract that was beneficial financially to the city? So is that, you can mull over, is it better to have it at the end of the season, or should we do a project per project?
I, I think we need to be real careful here, because some of these projects, by the time they're closed out, it's a two to three-year process. You might wanna talk about your warranty, your closeout process, but we're constantly, on June 30th of every year, we're actually doing a separate accounting for our annual audit. In the next few weeks, Lee's group will go into, with every one of our projects under contract, everyone will get your invoices in as of June 30th. That's one cutoff date. But project accounting is, is still a challenge for us, and part of it is the length of time it takes on these projects.
So we have to be far enough, far enough in the construction project, like, close enough to the end so that we're confident of where we're gonna end up. And we may be a little bit off if it hasn't been the formal last payment, but we're pretty good at estimating that. When the project is substantially complete, we could be paying bills for six months after that. But when we're at project substantial completion, we pretty much know where we're gonna end up. So it's not specific to the season. Some of our projects last multiple years, particularly our MDOT projects, because of the way that those are really MDOT contracts, and then MDOT invoices the city, and that is a much longer process than our locally bid projects.
Sure, okay, so I, I agree, everything is, you know, situational. But what is, I'm looking at this as a cash flow kind of situation. So what is the best info, the best situation where you can get the best information to council? These are the contingencies that were not used, and this is money that goes back into. So what would be the best?
So we, and the way our spreadsheet is set up, is we show what the bid amount was, and that what the final contractor payment was, and what percent over the original bid amount was, or under. Sometimes we're actually under, so if we...
You show your, your engineering and your construction, or contingency cost as well. So she shows the bid, engineering, and contingency cost in those spreadsheets.
Okay, so you guys can produce that report, and you give it to, at the most appropriate time.
Right.
I would like to see that, just from a finance standpoint. It's good information, and it's, you know, whatever the appropriate time, I don't wanna dump any requirement on, but this is how I used to get the best information.
Right.
Give it to me, when you most feel comfortable with it, and it's usable. Okay, thank you.
Not a problem.
All right, counsel? Councilman Hoag?
No.
No?
I'll move, I'll move this project. Now, y'all got me confused so much more. This, this is still D, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Support?
On the receipt of bids for the 2000, 023 local concrete road rehabilitation project, job number 2385 SFLD. Oh, did I read the right one? Yeah.
Yeah, you had the right one.
Okay.
Is there a second? Support?
Damn it.
No, that was before the motion was made.
Okay.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna get stuck doing anything funny. All right, it has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Banks, to approve job number 2385 SFLD, the 2023 local concrete road rehabilitation project. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a receipt of bids for local HMA road rehabilitation projects.
So first, sorry for the lingo. I try and remember to write asphalt when I make my council items. HMA stands for hot mixed asphalt. That's just the latest industry lingo. So for this is our asphalt road rehabilitation project. Southfield received five bids from our pre-qualified bidders. This work includes asphalt rehabilitation methods on 15 local asphalt roads in Southfield. It's in various sections of the city. Easiest thing to do would be to reference your map that is attached as part of the item. Construction, again, is scheduled to begin mid-July. This is a very large scope of work. We have extended the completion date to July of 2024. This was to help afford us the best bid prices with this large amount of work. When completed, this project will improve 5.8 miles of local roads. The total cost of the project, including the 25% engineering inspection, testing, and contingencies, is just under $5 million. Again, funds are provided from the fiscal year 2223 and 2324 local street funds. So asking counsel to authorize the expenditure and award the contract for the 2023 local HMA road rehabilitation project to Allied Construction Company out of Clarkston, Michigan.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Mayor?
I just wanna confirm, because this list has changed from when we last talked.
I don't think so. You might be thinking we have a couple more projects to bid.
Yes, you have.
So...
So I just, I just had a meeting with Sussex Woods, and I told them that not this year. So now I'm looking at this map, and Sussex Woods is included. So I will have the pleasure tomorrow of informing the neighborhood that their, their wishes come true. You didn't tell me this earlier.
Yeah, the funding was still unsure, and I would have hated to give you the full list if we couldn't afford to put that full project together. I'd rather give someone good news later than bad news.
All right. Well, I'm glad for the good news. I'm not, I'm not taking you to task for that, my lack of knowledge about that. I, I'm just reading this over the weekend and seeing we're getting more streets done, which is always good news.
Yes, yeah. Some of those, like I said, this one is a two-year project, so some of the streets won't be completed until next spring and just early summer. So we don't, once we have a contract, this contract awarded, and have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, we'll have more of a set schedule of what we expect to complete in 2023 and 2024. Oftentimes, they will just prioritize those roads, and then as fall comes, we have more temperature restrictions with asphalt work, so we'll see how far we can get this construction season before they have to close up for the season.
In light of the conversation that had, that was taking place on the last item, we, we had a conversation maybe two weeks ago regarding Shenandoah Street, and that project is two years old. We did it two years ago, Mount Vernon Place. So it's not totally closed out, correct?
Correct.
So this is a case in point. At the time, we're hearing from, some of you may have heard from this resident who, all this work was done in Mount Vernon Place, except in front of her house. And the concrete has degraded, and, and so the project is not closed out. That's what makes, as the administrator was saying, that's what makes some of this very difficult in doing the accounting, because it's multi-years. So this is, this is year three, and I'm thrilled that, it's always great to be able to tell a resident that, yes, we're gonna be there, we're gonna fix your road, because we get lots, you all, myself included, get those complaints. So again, this, this is great news. So now I have one more thing. Have we reached the, earlier tonight, or the meeting prior to this one, we approved the budget, which something near and dear to all of us was a million for spot repair in asphalt and concrete. And one of the things that we've talked about are the approaches, especially at the intersection. So for instance, Santa Barbara Street. Santa Barbara's in pretty good shape north of 10 Mile, but maybe 30, 40 feet is concrete, where the rest is asphalt. And I know you agreed with me on this, that it'd be, it'd be great to, you know, you drive into the neighborhood, and then all of a sudden, the asphalt is, is pretty good. So is that in your plans? I'm putting you on the spot.
Right, so it's not part of the scope of work for this concrete work this year, so...
I'm talking about the spot repair, the million-dollar spot repair. Now, is that just for Wild Hearn and Sharon Meadows, or are we gonna get to a couple of these other areas?
Yeah, I'm not expecting those road approaches to be done under these contracts. So the additional funds, so we use this year's dollars and the budget that you just approved dollars, so that we could put a bigger project together. Those are roads we could probably put together its own mini-project of just doing road approaches. It's also, when I am doing any of our local roads, or if it's one of our major roads, I always make sure we're not missing those pieces of those, what we call like the curb returns into the neighborhood streets. We just sat down with the road commission for Oakland County at our strategic planning mission. I specifically brought that up, because a lot of those approaches are on county roads, and they do say that they can't speak to the past, but they say currently, when they're coming on to do a major road, they are not going to leave those pieces, like those gaps, that just keep getting missed. And so as we go through our review process with their projects, it's something the city is gonna be looking out for, to make sure they include those approaches. And then when we do our local streets, even if that major road is not ours, we always will take care of it up to the edge of the road as well, so we don't wanna leave any of that. Even if the pavement material is different, we may, like, some of those streets that you mentioned, it's like, that's not a rehab project. That needs to be totally rebuilt. If we were doing Santa Barbara, for instance, we would rebuild that likely in asphalt, just put some new concrete curbs on as needed. If the road commission's out there doing 10 Mile with concrete, then they're gonna pay that in new concrete. So we are gonna make sure that those areas do not get missed. And I'm not sure if it will be its own project. We'll have to, to see. I think the best opportunity is to pick up those areas with the rest of the neighborhood road project.
I, Mayor, I did have a, two, three weeks ago, a conversation with Red Grondelbell, OHM, and the discussion was not to do that as spot, but as a mini-project. Our spot work is meant to go in when a road is cut for a repair. Although we get good prices, the feeling from OHM was that we could probably get a better price by doing it as a mini-project. We probably need to put our heads together to move that forward. And as Ms. Schultz has indicated in our meeting last Thursday, Friday, with the road commission, that was discussed as well.
You know, maybe you've noticed this, and the entrance, the entrances to neighborhoods offer major roads, and Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, but because of the turning, there, I think there's greater stress as people go, you know, into the, into the neighborhood. And then, so you see this in a number of neighborhoods, where the approach is not, you know, it's got potholes and so on. I'm not an engineer, but I, I also am not naive that a million dollars in cement spot repair is not a lot of money, or for blacktop. It sounds great, but with the prices that we're paying these days, it's not a lot of money. And that's the frustration that we all share with, and the calls that, in emails that we answer. Thank you, Lee.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I would like to move that we approve the receipt of bid for item E, for 2000, for 2000, for the 2023 local concrete bid rehabilitation. I'm scared, I'm sorry. Item E, receipt of bid for the 2023 local HMA road rehabilitation, rehabilitation project, number 2382 SSFLD.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the receipt of bid for the 2023 local HMA road rehabilitation project, job number 2382 SFLD. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And just a note to the mayor, we don't know when that street will be done, this year or next, so... All right, and then we have the receipt of bids for the Sherwood Village East subdivision water main and road improvement.
So for this project, the city received three bids from our pre-qualified contractors. This is in the east half of the Sherwood Village subdivision in Section 24 of the city. The proposed project will be replacing the water mains and completing selective concrete slab repairs on the subdivision streets. The water main replacement will upgrade any of the six-inch water mains up to eight-inch water mains, which is our current minimum standard. That helps with fire flows. Our water main replacement will be completed by a pipe bursting, which is a trenchless technology method, where the host pipe is fractured in place and allows for the simultaneous insertion of the new water main pipe. So this method of construction minimizes... water main pipe. So this method of construction minimizes the surface disturbance and actually speeds the, the cost of construction. It's not a great option in every neighborhood, but in this neighborhood, it's, it's a good option, because there are not existing sidewalks, because they still have to do an excavation at every single property, just one small excavation to reconnect their water service. And when you have a lot of sidewalk and other hardscape elements, that starts getting so expensive, then it's almost cheaper to just open cut. The, the project for the water main, so that it'll be the first time that we're using this method in Southfield. We have bid it as an alternate in some other neighborhoods, but it previously wasn't going to be our best, most cost-effective alternative. So this construction is expected to begin this July and be completed this November, and this will improve 1.2 miles of local roads and replaces 6,389 feet of new water main. So the total cost of the project, including the 25% for engineering, testing, and contingencies, is just over $3.4 million. And the road portion of this project is provided by our road bond fund and the water portion out of the water and sewer bond fund. So asking for council to authorize the expenditures and award the Sherwood Village East subdivision water main and road improvement project to Paymar Enterprises of New Haven, Michigan.
Council, any questions? Councilman Banks?
Thank you. Did we, didn't we have a problem with this company last year? On one of our projects?
Not a particular problem. I don't think any project goes smoothly with no problems at all. So these guys have done quite a bit of subdivision work for us, and yeah, we've been happy with their work. They do a good job.
Okay. And then those companies, and maybe I'm thinking of another company, are they taken off the list, or do we still allow them to bid?
So we do-
Those companies that have caused us problems in the past?
Yeah, we do contractor performance evaluations, and we have removed contractors from our pre-qualified list before. It was primarily temporarily, for at least a couple of years, they had to provide new references and prove to us, at least within other communities' projects, that they had improved the things that we were concerned about. So, and those contractors were able to get back on our bid list eventually and perform better than they had previously. But right now, we do, their pre-qualification is good for, I believe it's three years, and then they have to reapply and submit all of their pre-qualification documents again. Certainly, we know these contractors have the right amount of experience putting pipe in the ground, but we do check for past claims and lawsuits and safety violations, things like that, from all their other projects in other communities that we may not have been aware of.
Thank you.
And it's a different process for state projects, if you can just, for council's knowledge?
Yeah. So the pre-qualified bidders are just for, for our locally let projects. So when it has federal dollars and it's bid through the MDOT process, MDOT has their own contractors that are allowed to bid on MDOT projects, and we do not have a say in who those contractors are.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions? Yes.
Lee, when they do a project like this, does the price include restoration as well?
Yes.
It does? Oh, great. I don't wanna leave anybody out there hanging. All right, thank you. That's all I had.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the approve, or the authorization of receipt of bids for Sherwood Village East subdivision water main and road improvements, job number 2275 SFLD to Paymar Enterprises, Inc., in the amount of $3,415,549.38.
Support. Do you mean job number 2274?
Yes.
Okay.
Correction, job number 2274 SFLD. Thank you.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Frazier, for the receipt of bids for the Sherwood Village East subdivision water main and road improvements, job number 2274 SFLD. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aren't you glad you don't live in Pennsylvania?
Oh, my goodness.
All right. Next, we have a facilities maintenance budget amendment request.
Good evening, council. Facilities Maintenance is requesting an intra-department budget transfer to cover natural gas purchases. By that, I mean that these departments' overall budget is anticipating to be under budget this fiscal year, but some of the accounts need to be adjusted. There's three main reasons for this adjustment request. First of all, we're acquisizing our billing. By that, I mean, we purchase our, we've always paid 12 months in every fiscal year, but they haven't been the right 12 months. For some reason, as a large customer, we receive all our bills near the end of the fiscal year. In fact, I just checked, we've only been billed, we only have, only paid 22% of this year's budget out, but we know we're gonna be over budget. So these bills come in late. So traditionally, we've paid the bills based on when they've been received, which isn't accurate. You need to pay them by when the service is received. So to correct that, for this year, we're paying, I think, 15 months of bills. And we're gonna be paid based on when the gas is received, which is how it's supposed to be done. We may be in front of finance trying to explain a late bill, but it is the correct way to do that. The other reason is, natural gas is just more expensive. You know, we've been really lucky that natural gas has been a byproduct, really, of fracking for oil in this country. That's great, but the price has gone up quite a bit. We set this budget back, you know, worked on it in March, April, May, and the Nord Stream gas pipeline blew up, blew up in September. So, so have prices. So, those are the two reasons there's a budget shortfall. I don't anticipate using the 140 entirely. I think it's going to be closer to 130. But I would rather ask for the 140, this is what Facilities Maintenance Office came up with, than have to come back to you in August and say, oh, well, we need to amend the budget, because we were wrong back then. So we think this is on the safe side.
Council, any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve these budget transfers within the facilities maintenance budget. Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the facilities maintenance budget amendment requests. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Mr. Chair, John, I am, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
John, I, I'm supportive of this, but this is just a, a cur, a curious question.
Sure.
You mentioned gas. How much gas do we, we purchase per year? Do you, do you know?
Dollar-wise, it comes out to about $300,000 a year. I don't have that in MCF, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get, get it processed. We, we, when do we purchase, repurchase as needed? Like, we, we get to a certain point, then we refill, so to speak?
Actually, we can do it a number of different ways. You can lock in a price at any time. It's not like, oh, it's summer, natural gas is cheap, so you can lock it in for the winter. No, because if we purchase in advance, they're guessing what the rate is going to be in the winter. So in fact, right now, until we have a permanent purchasing agent, Treasurer Loenberg and I are working on the best timing to purchase this gas. And you're betting on a few things. You're betting on the weather. You're actually committing to buy that much gas. So there's another thing you're betting on, if you don't wanna purchase in advance more than you need. So it's, there's a lot more to this than just probably an off-the-cuff question.
If I can add in also, so we are actually part of a special cooperative, which includes the state of Michigan, University of Michigan, some other very large entities, and because of the purchasing power, we're able to buy it at a better pricing than if we bought it directly from Consumers Energy, for example. And what Consumers Energy, they work with us. Consumers Energy is the transporter, so we supply consumers with our, with our gas that we're, we're buying, and then consumers delivers it, and also they have a storage capacity, which we utilize. When gas is cheaper, we're able to store some, there's only limit, there's certain limitations on the amount of gas that we could store at a particular time, but that's something that we've been able to benefit from that. So when gas is at cheap prices, right now, for example, we're at the lowest price it's been in quite a while. So we're at 78% capacity right now of our storage tanks. So that's, that, that consumers would allow us to do, so that we're utilizing that right now. So we're taking advantage of that. We take, we look always at the opportunities, if we could lock in prices, that the future prices, if you're looking at the futures, are able to be beneficial to us. We have an advisor that works with this cooperative, which is very knowledgeable as well, and we're constantly monitoring the prices in the marketplace to be able to get the best prices for the city.
Okay. You definitely answered my question. I was definitely concerned about this arbitrage with respect. I know people have made their career on timing the market, but, but you're dealing with, the, the big guys are actually dealing, I realize that we are not, you know, skilled in those, those areas, but you are dealing with individuals that deal with the, the arbitrage of the, the fuel, fuel process.
Just for historical purposes, we, when we joined this cooperative, we ended up, in a two-year time period, we locked in the prices right at the bottom. We saw that it was at historical lows at that time, and we were able to save the city $250,000 over that two-year time period. And we're constantly working on keeping the, keeping the pricing favorable for us as well.
Okay. No, that's why I want to appreciate John, Irv and John, that's-
Thank you. And John's been very diligent as well, and it's a constant learning process, and he's been a very avid, knowledgeable person on this.
You know, our problem is, unlike most of us at home, who might use gas for heating, cooking, or cooking in hot water, almost all our gas is heating. So we need it when it's the most expensive, and that's the problem. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we-
We approved it already.
Oh, we did? Oh. That's right. That's why I saved my question. So I'm getting tired.
Last on our agenda items for discussion is the authorization to award the construction contract for Carpenter Lake to WCI contractors.
Good evening, council. Parks and Recreation is seeking your authorization for the construction contract for Carpenter Lake. We want to award it to WCI contractors. This project, just a reminder, this project became a reality when we received the grant from the MEDC. We received $600,000. The project itself is for a year-round restroom, an expansion, an expansion and an improvement of the current parking lot, and then a approximately 25-person open shelter. We put the bid out in February of '23, and we only received one bid for 1.2. And so we had an earmark of about $950,000. Those were our numbers from OHM. We knew the possibility was there to be a little bit higher. We weren't questioning that as much as we were, we had nothing to compare it to. So we only had that one bid. So we worked with purchasing, and we went out. We received four bids, WCI being the low bid of all four. But we also really did an evaluation of the company's past projects and their subcontractors. Upon that review, we wanted to recommend that we go with WCI contractors. We're also including OHM for the construction management and, and job completion at 12.5%. And then we also have a 5% contingency in this contract. And I believe the total is on my second page, the total is not expected to exceed $1,194,270. We have been told by WCI contractors that anticipates that work will be substantially completed by October, October 30. And if you remember, I came before this council, and we had a deadline of September for that grant. We did, we did check in with MEDC right along through this project, and we, we talked to them quarterly, we do quarterly reports, and so there will be no problem requesting the extension. But we really do wanna see it completed in its entirety by December. But we've got an October 30 date. So Parks and Recreation is asking you to authorize WCI contractors for the Carpenter Lake project. And I can answer any questions you might have?
Council, any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we award the construction contract for the Carpenter Lake project to WCI contractors in a amount not to exceed $1,194,270, with funding coming from the MEDC grant and the Parks and Recs Fund.
Support.
That's-
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to authorize the award of the construction contract for Carpenter Lake to WCI contractors as presented. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
I do have a question, but it has nothing to do with what we just voted on.
Sure.
Is that gate, is that a manual gate? Do you have to go there and lock the gate? Or does it stay open all the time?
It stays open all the time, but it is a gate that is in disrepair at the time. So it is an automatic gate. It's just not functioning right now.
Okay. Is there anything, I mean, should it be repaired?
Yes. And, and during this project, we are, we are looking at that as well.
Okay. Now, if someone's in at Carpenter Lake, and it's time to close the gate, if, is it on a clock, or is it, someone has to go out there?
On, on regular operation, it's on a, it's on a timer.
How do they get out if they're-
It, it will open for them to leave. It just won't open when people come in. Yeah.
Tell them out?
But that's, but that's the, that's the sticky wicket right now. It's not functioning in that capacity. So we're, we're gonna take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
All right. Anything else, council? Okay. Now, I'll move to the council portion of our agenda, and we have two expense reports that were given to you this evening for Councilwoman Hoag.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the approval of the two expense reports for Councilwoman Coretta Hoag, one for the MML Core Weekender in Bay City, and the other is the MML CapCon from Lansing, Michigan.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the expense reports for Councilwoman Hoag to attend the MML Core Weekender and the MML CapCon conference. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
And one abstention. Council, we also had an error earlier in our meeting with our meeting minutes. The agenda says that it is the regular meeting minutes of May 10 that are being revised. It's actually May 1. So I think we need to revote on those.
Chair, me?
The, the minutes say, yeah, the minutes say that they were for, the minutes in our package say that they were for May 1, and our agenda says May 10, and the motion was for May 10.
But the one that I gave you says May 1.
It still says May 1.
It's for May 10? No.
The meeting was May 1.
May 1.
The meeting was May 1.
Correct. But the motion was to approve the revised minutes of May 10. Is everyone, is everyone following me there?
Yes.
Okay.
On the agenda, we have May 10.
Yeah.
But on the-
The minutes are actually May 1. There's just an extra zero added. And so, Mr. Cruz, did you wanna correct this?
Yes. Yep. Do I have to make a whole new motion up, or can I just amend that one?
No, that's not what I'm looking for, but thank you though.
No, that's not what I'm looking for, but thank you though.
Just...
So the motion that was made by the Councilmember Cruz?
Councilmember Cruz, yes.
And so...
Would you like a, a new motion?
Councilmember Cruz, did you intend for that to be the minutes, correct amendments of May first?
Yes.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Yes.
We're good to go.
Okay. I like being efficient. Okay. We will move to the rest of the council members, and we will start with Councilwoman Hoag.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Councilwoman Brightwell?
Yes, I have one announcement. The Oakland County Veterans Services on July thirteenth will be holding a resource fair, a resource fair in Holly, Michigan. It's from nine AM to noon. And one of the items there that will be highlighted will be dental care for veterans, and the University of Jordan Mercy School of Dentistry, Wayne County Community Health, the Bowman Community Health, they would, and the Wayne County Dental Hygiene Clinic. So we are asking that you would reach out to this veteran resource fair, so you can participate in those, in the dental, I guess, a dental survey of patients, and they will fix what you have that needs to be done. So feel free to reach out to us here at City Hall, and we will provide you with all the contact information. So you need to register with the Oakland County Veterans Services for the July thirteenth resource fair in Holly, Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes, good evening. First, I'd like to wish all the men Happy Father's Day, all of you that's fathers, that's coming up Sunday. Also, Tony Dunbar from Rashida Tlaib's office was here tonight. She had to leave because her daughter wasn't feeling well, but she did ask me to make an announcement that on Wednesday, June twenty-first, at six PM, that they will be hosting a district-wide tele-town hall, which will discuss the CPF legislative priorities, update on neighborhood service centers, and that they are also sending out e-blasts and robocalls to all of us on council to let us know. And this, and that she also wanted us to know that Rashida Tlaib's office is there to help us with VA, social security, passports, immigration, and many, many, many more services. And if anyone is going to DC and would like to have a tour of the White House, please reach out to them. And she left the office number, which is three one three four six three six two two zero. She also stated that this is capital project funding, that's what the CPF is for, and that's different than the community project funding that we spoke about during our budget and other times that we speak. So I'm sure that we'll be reaching out and talking to them about that. The Capital Projects Fund provides ten billion dollars to the states and territories, and they're freely associated with the tribal governments to fund critical capital projects that enable work, education, and health monitoring in response to public health emergencies. So that's a good announcement, and that'll be taking place on Wednesday, June twenty-first. Also, I had an opportunity to go to Mackinac Island, and it was a wonderful experience. I had an opportunity to meet with so many people and to discuss so many projects and things that we are doing currently here in the city of Southfield, and we will be partnering and collaborating with some of the other partners that we have, such as LTU, and some of the other new companies that is coming in, or that's already here, Clarion's have representatives. It was just a great experience. The weather was wonderful. I was there with the mayor and Mr. Zorn and Shelley Freeman and a few other people. And I was pretty much like the extra person in the luggage. I didn't, it really didn't cost the city that much for me. I didn't have to pay the full amount, so I was happy to go. It was very exciting, and I thank everyone for that opportunity. And with that, again, Happy Father's Day to everyone, and that was it for me.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, for that. No, I don't have anything this evening.
All right, Councilwoman Banks?
I also would like to wish all the fathers a very happy Father's Day. Enjoy your special day with your family and loved ones on Sunday. Thank you.
Councilman Fraser?
Yes. I would like to say to the people in the room and the people that are, that are watching us on table, on cable, that this is a season for scamming, especially with seniors, and people our age are raised at a time when they trust other people, and I'm going to confess, about five years ago, I got scammed, and it raised my antenna to the point where whenever my phone rings, I pay real close attention to what some people are, the people on the other end are saying. And the two that seem to be calling me the most, and I'm sure they're calling other people, are, one is they say they're calling from Medicare, and they want to know if you've received your plastic Medicare card. And I kind of hemmed and hawed, and I said, you know, I got all the cards I need. When I hung up, I called Medicare. Medicare says they are not sending out plastic cards. The paper is so much cheaper to make than a plastic one, and it never expires, so there's no reason for them to send out plastic cards. The other thing is, and this is the one I got caught with, is somebody called and said that they were my grandson, and they were in, in trouble. He would, they said he was down, the voice said, "I'm down in Mexico. I was in a car with my friend. We got stopped by the police. When they searched the car, they found out that there were drugs in the car. It wasn't me, it was my friend's car, I was just with him, and now I'm in jail. I need a, I need some money for an attorney, because they're going to take me to court this afternoon." And I listened to the story, and I said, you know, this sounds just like something my grandson would give me. And so I did, I sent the money, and I got scammed, and I, right after I sent the money, I said, jeez, I don't know why I didn't call him. Called him, he answered the phone. I said, "What are you doing?" "Oh, I'm in my apartment watching television." So I have devised something that I use whenever anybody calls and tries to mimic my, any of my grandchildren or whatever. I just say to them, okay, what's the secret word we agreed to? That if you ever got in trouble and you've needed to call me, use that secret word. And if it's a scammer, they won't know what the secret word is. My grandson or anybody else would know what the, what the secret word is. So with artificial intelligence, it's getting worse and worse. I heard on the news the other day that there was a grandmother that's, grandson did about the same thing, and she ended up sending nine thousand dollars, and she did the same thing I did, called her grandson right after she sent the money, and he was home. So please, if you don't recognize who it is, hang up the phone. If it's really them, they'll call back, and they'll say, "What'd you hang up on me for?" But just don't get caught in it. You can be as smart as you want to be. They're catching doctors, they're catching just everyday citizens. So be on the lookout and be safe, and don't spend your money except where you want to spend it. Thank you.
Okay. Are you going to share what that password is with all of us?
Am I going to share the password?
With all of us?
Yeah, I'll, I'll share the password with you.
Goodbye.
I don't have a password, but so no matter what they say, it's the wrong one.
All right. And I too just want to wish everyone a Happy Father's Day for, for all those fathers out there. And with that, Mr. Mayor? We do have a travel expense for him.
Mr. President?
We can negotiate. Yes?
I approve, I move that we approve, I'm sorry, the expense report for Mayor Seiver at the Detroit Regional Chamber Policy Conference this past May thirtieth through June second in Mackinac Island, Michigan.
Support? It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Fraser, to approve the travel expense reimbursement report for Mayor Seiver to attend the Detroit Regional Chamber Policy Conference, May thirtieth through June second, twenty twenty-three, in Mackinac Island. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. To just continue a little bit with what Councilwoman Taylor mentioned, we did have a delegation. This is the first time I've, I've ever attended, and I found it most rewarding, particularly because you have a captive audience. So one of the highlights for me was sitting down, and I'm going to, when I receive them, share these notes with you all, a meeting with Jerry Norcia and his staff of DTE. We pressed him about a number of Southfield electrical grid issues. We also had a great meeting with Nishtha. As you know, we are getting a grant Wednesday at noon.
Yes. Through Rebuild Together.
For rebuilding together. We also have a project that we're hoping, third time around, will get funded for the tax credits for John Grace to develop into subsidized senior housing. There were a number, a whole number of other, other meetings that were very worthwhile. And Lawrence Tech at the Southfield City Center held a session promoting Southfield, so it was imperative that I be there along with Lawrence Tech president. So we were, that event was well, well-attended, and we had, we had a number of other events that transpired during the time we were there. So it was very, very beneficial, and like I said, I'd never been before, so I've changed my opinion about the conference. I'd also like to mention, and I sent all of you an invitation, the South Oakland Mayor's Association is meeting at this Wednesday evening at six PM at the Edge River Barn. I need to know if you're attending, I have to have my meal account in tomorrow. The, it's our turn to host the South Oakland Mayor, so I think I've only heard from one of you that, that is attending and one that cannot. So again, I need to finalize, so if you're planning to attend, please let me know tonight. Thank you. And then finally, as you know, I'm a founding member of the Southfield Parks and Garden Club, and for sixteen years, I've chaired, co-chaired the annual garden walk, and you're invited to that this Sunday, next Sunday, from two to five PM. We're doing something different this year, we're doing a pond tour. There are a number of folks in Southfield who have backyard ponds, and so we'll be doing, taking a shuttle bus around to view the ponds, but they're not just ponds, they're the landscaping that, that goes with them. So we'll be in four different neighborhoods, and we have a shuttle bus that'll be leaving from the front steps of the Parks and Rec building this Sunday. And considering you're getting a bus ride all around the city and seeing these yards, the ticket is only, only ten dollars, and it, and the money then goes towards supporting the Emmanuel Farm, Community Farm, all of that produce is, that the club grows is turned over to Forgotten Harvest. None of it goes to members. We also do trail cleaning and litter pickups, so this is the only fundraiser the Parks and Garden Club has. So even if you're not able to attend, a donation would be lovely from, from all of you. It's a 501(c)(3), it's tax deductible, and I'm sharing that message with the greater audience, most of whom have left. Anyhow, I hope you can come. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Thank you. Just to add to the discussion about the Mackinac Policy Conference, we also had meetings with Oakland County. The, with Oakland County, we discussed their economic development restructuring and also accessing their Housing Trust Fund to further our housing activities. We also met with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. I think there, one of the hidden benefits is some of the conversations that you're able to have on the side. I had conversations with representatives from Kresge, Ralph Wilson, and Joyce Foundation, and the two, the two big projects that I think have a regional emphasis, that I think people will be watching, with the right positioning, we could secure funds, what we're doing along the nine-mile trail. You know, that is our Dequender Cut, that is our Joe Louis Greenway from I-75 to 275. I think a lot of folks are watching that. In addition, the recreational opportunities that we're building along that corridor. In addition to that, a lot of the money that came for the original two-mile stretch acquisition along the Rouge, where we're starting to do that Streamhead Trail, folks are still watching that. And as the foundation community finishes up their obligations to the, the grand bargain, if you'll recall from the Detroit bankruptcy, I think there's some opportunity that we need to look at, discussion with the mayor and our city planner, I think that's something we need to package correctly. In addition, the foundation community has a strong affinity for what you folks and with Southfield has done in our Smart Zone at the Centropolis. Ralph Wilson, New Economy Initiative, a lot of those entrepreneurial activities, we're, they love the numbers we're producing. I'll be sharing with you the economic impact for, for us, report that LTU had produced, and the number for Centropolis is over seven hundred, or the impact of LTU is over seven hundred and seventy million in our local economy. There's some other very impressive numbers, so that relationship we're cultivating continues to produce results. We also had a very productive meeting with our state senator and our state rep, and our DDA was with us as well. So it was exciting, and as the mayor said, it's an opportunity just to be in a different environment, and it's just focused, the, the energy level there is quite high. I think the other thing that's real interesting is, in addition to focusing on economic development, we're seeing for the first time, a lot more focus on housing and the affordability of housing. It's interesting how this definition of affordability is being defined in certain cases. You know, an entry-level home, workforce housing, they're now saying three fifty to four hundred thousand, and so things are changing very differently. As I mentioned earlier, Mike Duggan, the mayor of Detroit's comments on tax restructuring will prompt something that we need to weigh in as a community and what its impacts are. As you approved the budget tonight, you saw that pre-great recession, we were at almost three six, three point seven billion, you're at two nine, while we recovered some. Ideally, I'd like to be at that three six seven, plus the inflation. Ideally, I'd like to be at that 3.67 plus the inflation we've lost the last 10 years. Well, had we had steady regular growth and not that great recession, we'd probably have a tax base of about 4.8 to 4.9 billion. That would lower our millage rate. So these are the things that we'll be keeping our eyes on in the next few months and trying to get our hands around what the Detroit proposal may mean, and how do we optimize a discussion about that change to benefit Southfield. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening, counsel. I just have two ordinance amendments. The first one is from our police regulations, Chapter 9, dealing with resisting, hello? Okay. Resisting or obstructing a police officer in the discharge of their duty. The state statute is mirrored by the ordinance, except a few years ago, they actually added the definition of obstruct, and we never added to ours. And the definition of obstruct includes the use or intended, sorry, intended use of physical interference or, or force or annoying failure to comply with a lawful command. So we need to have that in our ordinance. So this is a housekeeping matter, and we wanted to bring that to your attention so we can be in line with the state statute.
Counsel, any questions?
Can you, can you explain that again? I didn't quite get it.
So we, there's an ordinance and also there's state law for, I'm sorry, the resisting or obstructing a police officer. Several years ago, they updated the state statute to add the definition of obstruction. We never added it to our ordinance, even though the rest of our ordinance, of course, mirrors the state statute. We never added the definition of obstruct, obstruct as the legislature did in Lansing, so we are once again mirroring, you know, the state statute and adding the definition, because we just, we need to be, have the same exact language.
Okay, the, would an obstruction be like if he stopped someone and someone, and someone else is in the car, they were trying to keep him from putting handcuffs on the person, that he was?
Right. It could be something like that. So that's why, you know, the state law, they added the definition, and we need to do the same, and we just never did it.
Okay. I understand now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve the amendment to Chapter 9, Public Peace and Welfare, Section 9.141, resisting or obstructing officer in discharge of his duty of the city code.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the amendment to Title 9 of the Police Regulations, Chapter 9, Public Peace and Welfare, Section 9.141, resisting or obstructing officer in discharge of his duty of the city code. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just, I want to like to introduce ordinance number 1772.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to introduce ordinance number 1772. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Last but not least, we have an amendment to the vacant property registration of the city code. What we've done here is we added some definitions, certificate of occupancy. We also talked about evidence of vacancy, so that there's a better clarification of vacant property. We also added the word abandoned when we addressed vacant. We also talked about when there's utilities connected. In the past, individuals would say, "Well, I don't need to register it as a vacant because I have, you know, lights or gas." But we've added some information to the ordinance such that they need to provide more information and affidavit, identification and things of that nature. I do, we all start off before I get to something else. We have a late registration fee that's been increased to $1,000. If once we discover that it's a vacant property and 30 days have passed and they do not register it, then we will have that option. And what I wanted to say, this was brought up by Council President on page seven, when we talk about this little card that we want put in the window of rental properties, now vacant properties, we had taken out something about 72 points. And I think as we were changing it, talking about it on Thursday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, I forgot to put the rest of the sentence that talks about the little car that's going to be supplied by the city, and we took out the portion, I believe, Council President, you had referenced.
To, to make it mirror the rental ordinance.
Exactly, yes. And I looked today and I thought, okay, it disappeared, so I'll make sure that's taken care of. And so that's pretty much it. I do also believe that our building official is here, if you had any questions, but we, again, wanted to clean up the ordinance as we did with the rental registration, so we're doing the same with the vacant property registration.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. We discussed this at the Neighborhood Services Committee meeting, and I'd like to thank our building official director, Mr. Woodward, for bringing this forward. But I thought the card was supposed to mirror what we, you're saying it's not on, in here?
The original version that we had on Wednesday when we discussed it, setting the agenda, still had the old 11 by 17, 72-point font. So it has been changed to the, the posting will be provided by the city of Southfield.
Oh, I apologize, because that's not what we discussed at all, and I'm like waiting on that.
Right. That's, I, I caught that change before it came to everyone.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. So it's, it was a good recommendation to bring this forward, and I think it's just going to help and assist the building department. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the approval of the proposed ordinance amendment for vacant property registration.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the proposed ordinance amendment for vacant property registration. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to move approval, or to introduce, I should say, ordinance number 1773.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to introduce ordinance number 1773. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
I am obligated to inform you that due to the resolution that the mayor brought for, for Juneteenth, I must now play Sheldon Cooper's song with flags and let you know that the flag, that Texas is the first state, Texas is the first state to make Juneteenth a, a state holiday. The flag is designed red, white, and blue to indicate.
Is your mic on?
The flag is designed red, white, and blue to indicate that the coordination with the American flag. The star in the middle is reflective of Texas, along Star State, and the burst that comes with it is part of the new horizon, and the horizon is in the middle, for the Americans who have been given their freedom.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We have, we've, we've already heard from our city treasurer, our planner, our successor engineer, nothing to schedule, anything else to come before, counsel? This meeting is adjourned.
Well, just a reminder that next week's meeting is on a Tuesday.
Yes.